Welcome to the February 6th Planning Board Meeting. On the agenda today, we have review minutes from January 16th. We have a definitive plan from Mr. Sheehan for 3537 Interlakeen Road, and then we have a sign for 30 Main Street. So has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, so next up, we are going to continue the public hearing from January 6th, I mean January 2nd, for 3537 Interlakeen. And I'm gonna just start, before we start in on that, I'm gonna just give a little bit of background. We received a preliminary plan in June from the applicant for subdivision under our subdivision regulations. And at that time, that preliminary plan was more or less a placeholder, you know, because we had this inclusionary housing bylaw that was introduced, and this was a way for them to, you know, before the bylaw came to town meeting for a vote, to submit a plan without meeting the requirements of that bylaw. So the planning board at that time took no action on the preliminary plan, but as part of that process, eight months later, they are required to submit a definitive plan, and that brings us to where we are today. And I see we have, we have the applicant team on Zoom. Can you please introduce yourselves?
Of course, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jonathan Silverstein. I am the applicant's attorney, and with me is Bob Fornier from S.K. Design Group, who is the design engineer in the project.
Okay, is the applicant himself here?
I don't believe Mr. Sheehan is available to attend tonight.
Okay. Okay, so did you want to present as a start?
Certainly, thank you. So as you indicated, Madam Chair, this is the follow-up to a preliminary plan that was submitted eight months ago or so. It shows, and I'll ask Bob to bring up the plan and walk you through the details of it in a moment, but just by way of introduction, it shows a subdivision of three lots of more than 300-acre property, and with a short cul-de-sac road. No waivers are required or requested for this plan. And as I indicated when I met with the board on the preliminary plan, this is not a plan that the applicant intends to construct. This is not the plan that the applicant intends to use to develop the property. As you said, it's really just to perfect the zoning freeze under state law, which doesn't mean that the board cannot or should not give it the normal review that it would give for a plan. But just by way of transparency, we wanted to be very upfront that this is not a plan that the applicant intends to or will develop for the property. So with that, unless the board has any questions, I'll turn it over to Bob to just sort of walk you through the details of the plan.
Okay, well, you know, right off, one question I have is that, as part of, I'm sure you're very well aware that as part of a public hearing, there is wording that, that, and it's shall, use of the word shall, that the applicant and his engineer and surveyor shall be present at the public hearing. So, you know, I recognize that you're his attorney and that the engineer is here as well. Our attorney, our town council is here, Donna Brewer, and I think we could probably, Donna, what's your comment on that? Should the board, you know, given that the applicant himself is not here and there is that wording, should the board, you know, vote on whether to require that or not?
Yes, you can, but as you and I have discussed, Madam Chair, you can waive strict compliance with the subdivision regulations.
Okay, so does that require, you know, a vote of the board, or, yeah?
Yeah, you should, you should vote.
Okay, all right.
Whether to proceed without the owner present.
Okay, so thoughts from the board on that?
I don't have any objection.
I don't have a problem.
I mean, I feel like
I'm okay with it.
we got this on the table, let's move along.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we proceed with the engineer from, your name is, and you're an engineer from, Bob?
Bob Fornier, yes.
You're an engineer?
Correct.
Okay, good. So I make a motion that we proceed with the applicant's engineer at this public hearing. Do I have a second?
And the attorney.
And the attorney.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so do you want to go ahead and present?
I'd be happy to. Can I have the permission to share my screen, or?
Absolutely. Sure.
That's what we want.
I think you have to enable me.
You do.
Okay. Yeah, by way of introduction, I'm Bob Fornier with S.K. Design Group, representing the applicant. Our company put together this entire application that I'm about to share with you if you give me permission.
You're not able to see that, you don't see the share? Share button is on, is it on?
Well, can you see my screen now?
No, just you.
Just you.
Okay, then, I haven't been given permission to share then. It says host has disabled participant screen sharing.
Let's see, back screen share. You can't see that, it's up on our screen, but
that's, that's a share, so go to.
Can you, can you send him the meeting ID and passcode?
Thank you, Scott.
He can just see us.
Can you see anything yet on my screen?
Nope.
Okay.
You're trying. Ah, it's, it's.
Right, right.
I don't do this a lot. I apologize.
If you can, you can tell me where we are, I can get the plans out on the table here for the board, so if you can just tell me which.
Oh, paper blank.
That's the first one, right there, you guys.
I like paper.
Hold on.
Oh, you have. Much better.
Oh, that's going this way, yep.
This is not.
Okay, can anybody or everybody see this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're starting here with a 313-acre piece of property, very large property, it has frontage on Interlakeen Road. That's the first drawing here that shows the entire property. There's a zone line here that runs kind of like the first third of the property, whereby the front of the property is our two zone, and the rear is our four zone. Bear with me here. Yep.
No, the other graph, this is the fourth.
So the plan is, that we submitted, is to construct a 250-foot-long road off of Interlakeen Road and divide the 313-acre parcel into three lots. Okay, I think I have a picture that shows all three lots. I guess this is the best one. So we're gonna create a 10-acre parcel and a seven-acre parcel near the front, which would have frontage on the new roadway, and the remaining land then would be 294 acres. So we're going from one lot, three lots, by virtue of adding this additional road with its frontage. Each individual lot that was submitted with this plan would be on sewer. There's town sewer that runs up Interlakeen Road, as you know, or may know, that feeds the old Desistos School. For water, each individual well or each individual lot would have its own well, because there's no town water available. We also have designed a detention basin. I'm gonna turn to now, minute here. There we go. Okay, so we've designed a small drainage system to capture the, any runoff that was generated from the roadway. We're channeling it into a detention basin on our own property. We're creating an easement around that detention basin with anticipation that an association would be formed to maintain this basin in perpetuity. Another thing I wanted to point out is the way we've laid the lots out are such that the existing buildings, if they were not demolished as part of this project, they would have requisite front, side, and rear setbacks. So in other words, we haven't really designed this in a vacuum. We've configured the lots so that they will all conform the minute this thing is signed, and signed as approval, all the buildings that are there will conform. So if somebody wanted to convert them to houses or whatever, they wouldn't have to tear them down. Yeah, the only other thing I want to point out is that there's not much to this. We've been to the Health Department a couple of weeks ago. We got, we haven't gotten a written approval from them, but verbally, they approved it at their meeting. There was very little discussion, as there's really no health issue here to speak of, because of the fact that, you know, each lot will be provided with its own connection to the town sewer. So that's it, it's pretty simple. We also submitted stormwater calculations pursuant to the subdivision regulations that account for the increase in runoff that would be generated by construction of the new roadway and new driveways and so forth. That's really it for the application. Certainly willing to answer any questions anybody may have.
Just off the top, I mean, the existing drive that's on the side of the property, it says to be removed. What's the thinking on that?
Well, that was all a part of the stormwater calculations. So in order for the model to work, we run all these surfaces through a drainage design model, TR-55, and it accounts for, excuse me, any increases in impervious surface. So to make the basin as small as we could, we had to show that we're gonna get rid of some of these existing paved driveways in order for the basin to work. So in other words, that the driveway would be turned to, back to earth.
Okay, and so the access to the lot number three would be from the, from the driveway that's, the existing driveway that's to the north?
No, they're getting rid of both.
No, it would be from the new cul-de-sac.
New cul-de-sac. Comes up here, and then this is the proposed.
Oh, I see.
Um, Bob, question for you. Liz had asked about this earlier on page one of your Stormscepter document.
On page one of what? Sorry?
It's Stormscepter Contact, page one of the Stormscepter Detailed sizing report.
Oh, yeah.
Where it says Project Busque, and then on the next page, rainfall station name Pittsfield, U.B. Airport. Are those reference points?
They're not for us.
Explain that.
No, that was stolen from another project. You know, it's a, it's a little program that they offer, and you just input the project name on there to, just so you have something for the file. It appears that we just forgot to change the name of the project, that's all.
Really?
So are those
typo.
Are those, those figures, though, are those also from Busque and the Pittsfield Airport?
No, no, this was all done for this project. Like I said, other than the name that you're required to put on the top of the form.
Okay.
Yeah, everything, everything applies to this project, and we can certainly change it and
I think you should.
submit it for the record.
Good.
That's no problem.
Okay, all right. Okay, so is that it for your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're just, so the board now, if you guys can turn to page to 4.20 in your, in your regulations, division regulations.
Page, page.
Well, I'm from six.
Page six.
Let me know when you're there.
Okay, subdivisions, page six, got it.
Yep, 4.20, definitive plan. Okay, so we go right to that, because we're, we've already done the preliminary, so. All right, so let's just go through it. That's Donna's recommendation and Michael's recommendation, and I think, I think it's a good one. So
You gotta be in the subdivisions.
Are you guys all ready?
There.
Okay, so 4.201, General A, we have an original drawing of the definitive plan. Three copies were received, I think, at the town hall, is that right, Jennifer? Yep, okay, we have a properly executed Application Form C. The application fee is not applicable, because it turns out the Select Board has not, has never done that. So, and applications were submitted to the Conservation Commission. So we're good there. And the town clerk, there's notification somewhere in here, I saw a copy of that. Okay. Next up, 4.202, shall be prepared by a professional civil engineer or land surveyor. This was prepared by Mr. Scalise, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. We've got the, and if someone that, you know, wants, if we want to take turns, you know, it doesn't have to be me reading each section. Sorry. Liz, you have a nice voice, you sing. All right, so contents, 4.202. Can you hear me okay at the other end? You're good, okay. Subdivision name, boundaries, north point, date, and scale. I saw that there, okay, we're good. Name and address of record owner, divider, and engineer or survey, we're good there. Locust map showing property boundaries and so on. I'll set with that.
Yep, sure.
Okay, lines and widths of existing and proposed streets. E, boundary lines. F, sufficient data to determine location. G, location of all permanent monuments. The monuments were on one of those plans, is that right, Bob?
Yes, yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, widths of streets, I saw all that. Purpose of easements and our restrictions, that's on there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then suitable space to record the action of the planning board, Board of Health, CONCOM, and the town clerk. Okay, then the next section, the following items may be required. K, existing and proposed topography. I mean, this is a fairly level parcel, right? Bob?
Fairly, I mean, there's some grade to it, but we do show topography for the roadway.
I'm sorry?
We showed topography for the new roadway that's being constructed.
Okay, soil types, it looks like you covered that. There's no wetlands on the property that, I mean, on the large parcel, but in terms of, yeah, okay. Surface water drainage, layout, and private wells, and so you're on town and water sewer. Were there any private wells within 400 feet?
It's not town.
And not that we were aware of.
Okay. I'm sorry, Liz.
It's not town water, it's, they're, they're gonna each have a well.
Okay, okay, town sewer, sorry, thank you, yeah, okay. Let's see, okay, soil and percolation tests. I mean, it is on town sewer, so is that relevant?
Well, that would be irrelevant for this.
Yeah, okay. Test well results and other data suitable to demonstrate the presence of an adequate water supply?
Well, we have, we're only creating three lots, three single-family homes. They'll use less water than the former Desistos School lot did. So it's not gonna be even measurable how much water, how that would affect any kind of aquifer. We didn't feel it was relevant.
Okay. Location and species of trees intended for preservation. I think I, I saw that you had indicated that.
Yep.
Natural characteristics of the site. Evidence of the ability of the town government to provide necessary services. I think we're fine there. Okay. Impact statement, that's not applicable, because this is three lots, and an impact statement would be for 10 or more lots, okay? Okay, next, 4.204, Plan Approval by Board of Health. We have, we don't have input from the Board of Health public hearing, we're doing that now. And that brings us to performance guarantee. Now, before endorsement of the planning board's approval of a definitive plan of a subdivision, the divider shall agree to complete the required improvements specified in Section 6 for any lots in a subdivision. You know, so, so you're not planning on, you know, if you said you're not planning on building this, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so town council, Donna?
So typically, what's done in this situation is, if you'll look, this is under 4181-U is the statute, and the type of covenant or bond that would be provided is one that is chosen by the applicant. I suspect, Jonathan, you can tell me if this is different, but that you would be providing a covenant, that there would indeed be no sale of the lots before the improvements were completed. Is that correct? That would be what you would choose?
We can't hear you, Mr. Silverstein, we can't hear you.
Is that better? I'm having an internet connection issue.
Yes.
Yeah, so we would provide a covenant indicating that we don't intend to construct on the lots or sell the individual lots without providing financial surety. Again, you know, that we're not intending to develop this plan, so it would sort of be moot. Any development of the lot is gonna happen through some other approval process. So we, I don't know, I don't know if you use the standard form covenant, if you want me to prepare one. Happy to do either.
Yeah, typically, we have the applicant's counsel do the first draft, and then I'll look it over.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and, you know, obviously, I defer to Donna, but generally, that is prior to endorsement, but not, it doesn't have to be prior to approval.
Correct, yep. Yeah, so in case you're, that, any members of the board aren't clear about that, that is not a covenant that we need to have in writing agreed to before you vote to approve the plan.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna take comments from the audience, and then we, as a board, can discuss this, okay? So can you stop sharing your screen, please, Bob?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Thank you.
Might take me just a little while to figure out.
I think it was on our end.
Oh, here we go, stop sharing.
Beautiful. Okay, so let's see, why don't we start with folks here in the room? And I'm gonna ask if anybody wishes to speak in favor. If you can please come up and identify yourself with your name and your address, and make your comments. Speaking in favor first? Josh?
Josh Payron, 6200 Lakeon Road. Well, I mean, this is the best thing I've seen in seven years, even if it's not gonna be done. They're definitely right, they got drainage problems on that north and south driveways. My yard is a catch basin, unless I get on my hands and knees and dig the drains out or clean the road out. So putting a roadway right in the middle of that property is the best thing you could do, whatever plan you have. And this past week, I've had a car in my yard, because it's not safe to take what's going, that traffic's going up that road, it is a bypass. And now what I feared is coming true.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Anyone else wishes, who wishes to speak in favor? Attending on Zoom, anybody? Okay, anyone who wishes to speak against? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we can talk.
I have a question. Am I to assume that when they say, "We're submitting this application for this plan, but we're not gonna do it", does that mean this is the plan, and they're gonna sell the lots and not develop them themselves? Is that what they mean by, "This is the plan, but we're not gonna do it"? Am I right? Does that mean this is what you're getting an application for, and we're supposed to approve or not? But then, once that happens, those three lots will be sold to somebody else. You're not the people developing them. Is that what I, am I right, or am I?
Mr. Silverstein?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I'll keep my video off, just because of my internet connection, if that's okay. So, no, we don't intend to sell these lots. We are filing this plan solely for the purpose of perfecting a zoning freeze under state law. And that process required us to file a definitive plan within seven months of the preliminary plan that we filed, that the board previously discussed. Ultimately, and, you know, just to sort of update the board, we are working on a new master plan for the property as a whole that we hope will be responsive to the concerns expressed several years ago regarding the previous master plan. And we would come back to the town and proceed through the normal permitting process for that. But this subdivision plan before the planning board is solely theoretical. It will never be developed as shown. Frankly, a three-lot subdivision of this 300-plus-acre parcel just isn't financially feasible. This is simply an exercise required under state law to perfect the zoning freeze that we initiated by filing the preliminary plan.
Okay, so
Thank you.
for anybody who is not clear on it, last spring, we reviewed the Inclusionary Housing bylaw that was brought to the board by Patrick White from the Select Board, and that passed at town meeting. And in anticipation of that bylaw passing, what the applicants submitted was that preliminary plan, which means which means that they would not be on the hook to contribute into that inclusionary, into the housing trust fund. So that's, you know, that's here now in terms of their meeting the timeframe, as I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong. And at this point, with a definitive plan, if this is approved, and it's fairly straightforward, as I understand it, then they have eight years to, to build this actual plan. And, you know, within that time, they can do whatever they want.
They can change the application.
Absolutely. I mean, they have, would have to bring it. They would have to bring it back to the, you know.
Got it.
We assume that there are plans for that very large lot and perhaps more. And that would need to come back to the board. You know, but we don't really know. So, so that's kind of where that, that's at. Any other questions from the board or, you know, any other, anything else you'd like to talk about?
Well, I mean, you know, one, this may not be on the table in any way, but I mean, obviously a long-term question is, 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 are what plans there are for that main building. And it's, you know, I mean, you know, time's not on its side.
That is, that is definitely a question that I know is on others' minds. We received an email about that, but is not actually what is, you know.
Not, not.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're voting on the three, to have the three acres.
Three lots.
And the three lots in the acreage size that he's requesting.
It meets the zoning they're putting in the, in the driveway so that, you know, they have the.
Okay. So they can come back in 15 years and want more lots?
Eight years.
Change the acreage. Change the acreage of each lot.
They can come back at any point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So Donna, you're kind of keeping an eye on me here, make sure I'm accurate, right?
Yes, you're correct. They have eight years to present a different plan.
Okay, thank you.
But it's coming next week.
Yes. So is there anything, Donna, that I've, I should be covering that I haven't covered? Just so everyone knows, this is my first time. Indeed, it's the entire board's first time doing subdivision. Gary has done subdivision, but that was many years ago. So this is, this is new for us. So Donna, is there anything else that you would like us to cover as a board?
No, I think you covered all of the requirements. So you do have somebody who's got her hand up, so.
Lenore Sundberg's had her hand up for quite a while.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I think you need to unmute her. She can't do it from there. Is what she just, it just flashed up there. Lenore.
I'm surprised that we were able to mute Lenore. I mean, this is the nicest way possible.
There she is. But she's not unmuted. We still can't hear you.
You need to unmute yourself, Lenore.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sorry for my odd appearance, but I'm recuperating from cancer surgery, which is not, I'm not a pity party. I just needed to explain that, why I look so weird. Anyway, I have a quick question as to the mansion. And what, I realize that you are not required to respond to this question, but my question to you is, as I drive up 183 and I live very close to the De Sisto School, I see it crumbling into the ground and it's rather upsetting. And this has been happening for, you know, a decade or more now. And my question to you is, what plans do you have, if any, to do something about rehabilitating and renovating and restoring that historic building, which is a hallmark of that property?
Lenore, are you asking the planning board?
No, I'm asking either the lawyer or the engineer. I guess the lawyer.
Lenore, they can certainly answer if they'd like to, but that is simply not, and I understand your concern, but that's just not the, the topic of today. The topic is these three lots. And in terms of our zoning, they meet the zoning requirements. So, you know, if the applicant would like to answer, they certainly can, but I don't see any indication that they are choosing to. Okay?
I'm happy to speak generally to Madam Chair if you want. I, I don't wanna, you know, address issues that, that you don't think are relevant, but you know, the issue here is that this is a large piece of property that my client has spent millions of dollars in carrying costs over more than a decade. And without, you know, any economically viable option for redevelopment, so. Obviously, you know, there's, there's no need to retrod the ground of his prior proposal, which, which didn't go anywhere with the town. He's working on trying to come up with another proposal that would be economically viable, that would be palatable to the town and that would allow him to renovate and restore the mansion. The problem is, you know, it, it's just not possible to restore, you know, to spend millions of dollars restoring a mansion on top of the money that's already been spent in carrying costs when there's no, there's no prospect of being able to recoup that investment. And so that, that's what he's working on with Bob's office, with Bob and Jim Scalise to try to come up with a new plan that would be more, hopefully more palatable to the town than his earlier plan. And we're hoping to be able to come back and have some informal discussions with the town about that in the near future. And if we're able to find a path forward on that, then hopefully that could include restoring and preserving the mansion. So that's really, I can't offer more specificity on that now. But that's, that's the goal.
Understood. Thank, thank you. Okay.
I, I do have one other comment I just want to make in general, if that's okay.
Sure.
Just as a sort of, I did go to some of the informational meetings at the, at the property when they were trying, when Mr. Sheen was trying to develop the plan with the hotel and the condos and whatnot. And so, you know, I'm, I'm pretty intimately involved with that and what, what was proposed initially. And I just want to make one general comment regarding the character of Stockbridge and what I hope might be a vision that Mr. Sheen could embrace as he's planning, you know, as he's trying to plan something that is, as you say, financially viable, but also palatable to the town. And as you might note from looking at the housing on both sides of Route 183, as you travel, you know, relatively close to the De Sisto School property, most of those properties would fall into the category of sort of middle-class housing, let's just say. Relatively small houses, relatively modest houses all along there. And in, in Stockbridge in general, we have a lot of mixed housing that is, you know, large expensive houses mixed in with smaller other houses. And that, you know, defines the character of Stockbridge, that we are an inclusive town. We're not, I mean, we do have lots of second homeowners. They don't all live in McMansions and we, you know, it would be extremely nice to see the De Sisto School property reflect the character of Stockbridge. It reflects the character and the beauty of the spot. It is, you know, a spectacular spot which Mr. Sheen purchased at a fire sale price. I'm sorry that he hasn't been able to recoup, you know, his money, but he only spent 1.5 million as, or whatever it was, and on the property itself. And he lived there for some time.
Okay.
I, that's, that's the end of it. I just feel like it would really be nice if, that if the property were developed in such a way that reflected the town values. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Okay, so if there are no more comments, Donna, I guess we could move to close the, the public hearing so that the board can deliberate?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so is everybody ready for that?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion that we close the public hearing. And you know that means no more comments from the audience or Zoom. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, great. Okay, so we can, you know, deliberate now, talk about this. And you know, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I don't see where there's really a lot to deliberate on. I think we should accept it as presented and endorse it.
Liz, Carl?
I agree. I mean, everything they've done is, is, I mean, we're not building anything yet, but what they've done is within all their zoning laws and regulations, and they've given it clear thought in terms of water and drainage and.
Okay. As are good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with Liz.
All right, so that just leaves, we can make a, a motion to approve and we need to do the findings. And as I understand it, the findings would be that there are no wetlands protection, wetlands, wetlands issues. We have no input from the Board of Health. And there was something else. I can't remember, Donna, what was it that we, oh, the change, the, the one change they will make in the, the storm scepter report, but, I mean, that's a sort of a minor thing. Anything else? No? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Marie second? All those in favor? Hi. Okay, so you will take care of the covenant, Mr. Silverstein, with, with our town council with Donna?
Yes, I'll forward her a draft, hopefully in the next week.
Okay, Donna, anything else we need to do?
No, you're all set. You're gonna wait the 20 days. And once 20 days has passed and there's no appeal filed, then you can go ahead and endorse the plans, sign them.
Okay.
Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Okay, all right, folks, we have.
30 Main Street signs.
I think we wait, yeah, we have the 30 Main Street signs. That wasn't so bad, was it?
You gotta have something, something. This is great.
Okay, so is everyone ready with the, Jed from township, township four has submitted, he came in last fall, he submitted a, a request that he signed the requirements. It's going to be attached to the wall at eight feet high, 14 square feet. So has everyone had a chance to be happy with that? Yeah, make a motion that we approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Great, okay. So, there you go, Mr. John. Oh, I wanted to mention to you guys, so we have this Affordable Housing Trust Committee, right? And Liz is on it, of course, representing the planning board. And in they're working on a affordable housing production plan.
Yep.
And that will, my understanding is that that will be coming from the planning board for, for review.
Yep, and the select board.
And the select board. So I just wanted to, like, put it on your radar screen that that will be coming, you know, sometime soon to theater next, theater near you. A Zoom theater near you. Okay? So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I need to motion to adjourn.
Say anything about the next meeting or something? Isn't it? If there's anything anybody wants to bring up.
Oh, yeah, anything, anyone wants.
Anybody on, anything on the agenda next week or next time?
What has happened to the, we were gonna do with the Concom, talk about the Stockbridge, the bowl.
I've been, yeah, I went before the Concom.
We gave it to.
So I went before the Concom to, you know, listen to them, get input.
Yes.
And I got, you know, input from them and I am working on it.
Okay, David is gonna do, look at all.
David is working on some things too, so, yeah.
Okay, that's just sort of ongoing.
And also, you know, also on the radar screen, Michael and I are working on, on cell boosters, on, you know, personal wireless devices and so on. So, not personal, but wireless devices. So right now, it's, Michael's gonna be touching, Lennox just approved one, I think, last year at their town meeting. So he's gonna talk to Chris Ketchin in Lennox and gather some information there, but that will be coming, that will be coming soon too. Okay?
Thank you.
And I think that's it. Yeah. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second? Second. Okay.